To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for coming this evening. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Here.
Okay, all of the board is here.
It's been a while.
Right?
Yeah.
All right, but actually before we get going, I just want to thank everybody from the board and staff for their, the warm support that they've shown to the Nemets family who's been struggling the last few weeks. I know it means the world to Jeff and to Christina and honestly highlights probably everything that's best about our town, that it's grown a lot in the last 20 years, but still that small town where, you know, your neighbor gets sick and, and everybody feels it. So, I personally appreciate it and thank everything that the, actually staff has done in ordering these shirts and the board as well with their, reaching out to them and stepping in when they need to. Thank you. All right, the first item is public comments. Is there anybody here that's not on the agenda that wants to make public comments this evening? Okay. And then, is there anybody online? Let's just make sure. I'm not actually logged in, so can anybody see if there's anybody online that would like to make a comment? Sonya wasn't here and so I'm not logged in. All right, hearing none.
I don't see any mail.
Good. I appreciate it. And Sonya, nobody has emailed you with comments, correct? I'm assuming no. I got, I got a no there. All right. Yeah, blink if you're not okay and you need help. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, we had three items that are entertaining motion for approval, minutes of the village board meeting from July 11th, accounts payable through July 25th, and the refuse report for June of '22.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries six zero. Thanks. All right, items for separate action. The first one is ordinance 1972, amending the village code section 3-9 to grant a Class G liquor license. This is for Hacienda El Dorado, Mexican restaurant at 817 Montgomery Road, and we do have this listed as first reading.
Correct. Yes. If you'll recall, last meeting, the board gave direction to go ahead and draft the ordinance approving the Class G liquor license for Hacienda El Dorado. So, as President Brawley said, this is just first reading this evening, so I'll take any questions or if there's any issues with the ordinance, please let me know, but otherwise, that is what you have in front of you tonight.
Any questions? Any objection to putting in a consent? Okay. Thank you. All right, item B this evening is ordinance 1973, amending village code section 3-9 to grant a Class M liquor license to Gas &amp; Wash at 1055 Orchard Road. This is a waiver of first passage on the second.
Okay, thank you. And again, this was another one that was before the board at the last meeting. This is the packaged carryout liquor for Gas &amp; Wash, and the reason for the request of the waiver of first passage of the second is because I believe they are trying to open by August 1st, so that would work within their timetable. So again, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
A quick question, just clarification, and you and I have talked about this before. This class of license, and really all of our licenses, again, I just want to make sure none of the small bottles and none of the individual cans, 40-ouncers, anything like that.
Correct, yes. And that was an amendment that was made to the village code, probably, I think it was last fall.
Okay.
To clarify.
Okay, thank you.
So moved. Is it first reading or second reading?
No, go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved in second. Any further discussion? All right, call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
And that carries six zero. Thanks for coming. Yeah, certainly. You want to come up to the microphone though, just so?
So what is this not including? The 40-ouncers and the what?
It's essentially like the single serve, like the mini wine bottles.
So what size are we?
I would have to pull up the ordinance. It's all written in the code under the restrictions for that class of license, but we can pull it and forward it to you. But essentially, it's the single serve type alcohol, like so selling by, beer by the can rather than a six-pack, or like the individual sized wines.
And the hard liquor too, right?
Yes, if there is single serve hard liquor, then yes, that would include that as well.
Sorry, this is the first I'm hearing of it, so. Thanks.
All right, perfect. Let me move on to...
Before we move on.
Yes.
Jeff is trying to get into the Zoom meeting.
I just figured that out. I just got a text message from them too.
I don't know if we could let him in. He'd like to make a comment.
Yes, he in the queue?
No.
Nemets.
Nemets.
Oh, nice.
Oh, look at, there he is. Hey Jeff.
Hello, Village of Montgomery.
How you doing, sir?
Good, good. I'm, I'm sorry, I was trying to figure out what button I could hit to make, make sure I could speak and that people could hear me, but I appreciate you letting me into the meeting tonight. I just, I wanted to tell everybody I can't, I can't express how much this is all meant to me.
No problem, man.
And my family is all, I just wanted to come into the meeting today and say thank you to everybody.
That means a lot, Jeff.
It, it's going to take the community and you, Village of Montgomery is one hell of a community. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
You're welcome, man. You got this.
Yeah, we got you.
All right, all right.
Learn from the ones who have been through this. You, you have a lot of people to lean on that, that have been through this, so we're, we're praying for you and...
And I have, and I appreciate everyone's thoughts, prayers, everyone's vibes, everyone's good wishes and stories and, and everything, so. Yeah, thanks. We'll not, we'll not stop coming and please, from this point on, just keep all prayers coming because we're not in the woods yet.
You bet.
Thank you everyone again. Have a great meeting and I will be in touch with you, I guarantee it.
All right, Jeff.
Okay.
Get some rest.
I will.
All right, so who wants to go right after that?
Oh, God. Nobody.
And for those of you who don't know, Jeff grew up in Montgomery. He's basically lived here his entire life, so, on the Boulder Hill side. So we from Boulder Hill thought we lived in Montgomery our entire lives until I ran for election and realized that I did not, I did not grow up in Montgomery. At any rate, I appreciate you guys obliging there. All right, so we'll move into item C this evening, which is ordinance 1974, approving a redevelopment agreement to induce the redevelopment of the Orchard Road redevelopment project area. This is Transline Inc., waiver of first and passage on the second. And who would like to talk about this one? Sonya.
I'm here.
Hey Sonya.
Hello. We have Transline's RDA, our redevelopment agreement before you. They are requesting TIF funding to help with their project. As you recall, you approved their project for a warehouse and distribution facility out on Rochester Drive earlier this spring. They're looking at doing a total investment of approximately $6 million to build this facility, and they are requesting the TIF assistance. The RDA before you would reimburse up to $350,000 in expenditures incurred in connection with the project that are eligible for reimbursement. The expenses that are outlined in the agreement include soil removal as well as the completion of Rochester Drive cul-de-sac that's out there, and so those are kind of what we're targeting in as eligible expenses. As part of the redevelopment agreement, it says that they would agree to commence construction of the project by September 1st, 2022, and then complete construction by December 31st and obtain their occupancy by December 1st of 2023. The certificate of occupancy does have to be issued in order for the TIF funds to be dispersed for the redevelopment project. According to the agreement, we would be doing 75% of the increment collected would be paid back until we either hit that $350,000 mark or December 31st, 2038, which will be the end of the fifth. Based on some projections that Director Van Goren ran, we're looking at about five to six years before we would hit that, not to exceed $350,000. In the meantime, after the packet got sent out, the developers' council did get back to us with a few minor changes to the redevelopment agreement. I'm not sure if a copy got placed out before you, but I can go through what one major change with it was, is regarding the timing for completion of the project due to some supply chain issues and just kind of the economy at the moment. They are asking for a little bit more flexibility, so rather than having that December 31st completion date, they're asking to have 365 days from the effective day of the redevelopment agreement to complete the project and to make sure that they have their occupancy with, within six months of completion of the project. And they're asking that there be, that the village not withhold reasonable extensions if supply chain issues and such are incurred as they're building out this project. So for some reason, something gets delayed and it pushes their project back a little bit. They're asking to have that little bit of flexibility just with the market being the way that it is. So that is one of the changes they had in there. The other had to do with the name of their subsidiary LLC that this will be built and bought in, so they had that small change to the RDA as well. I did provide a redlined 1-2 attorney, Julian, so she has that to reference, so, so that you can adopt it with those changes if those are acceptable to you. I did review those changes with our TIF attorney, and she saw no issue with the changes that they had regarding the timing, because again, it's with completion of the project, and it seemed reasonable to, to allow for some extension if needed, given the current climate. We do have people from Transline here. I believe the owner Drew is there at the meeting, and I believe his counsel and project manager are on the Zoom call as well, in case you have any questions for them. I do know that the owner has been pushing to try to get a little bit additional funding. Certainly, they would like to be able to have a chance to speak and kind of outline some of their additional costs to see if it is possible to go more than the $350,000 that is outlined in the agreement you do have before you tonight. And I believe our person on Apple is probably somebody from their team that would be happy to go through some of their expenses and plead their, their cause before you.
Thanks, Sonya. I have a question, Sonya.
Yes?
If there were, if there were any changes or increases in the reimbursement, would we make that in a motion, or are we just approving what we've got tonight, and if there's ever a change in the reimbursement, it would come before us again?
You can make that in your motion tonight.
Okay.
And then, attorney review, and we can make sure we get a copy of that to you, the weekly notes, once we get it updated.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is, and sorry, I was trying to read through something because I'm a little bit confused, but this is pay as you go, right?
Um, no, they would not be getting paid until the project is completed, and then it's 75% of the increment. So they'd be submitting their receipt after they get their C O.
And so they'd be getting, they'd be getting their reimbursement every year for the remainder of the TIF? Okay, which is perfect. That's been our policy.
Until they reach?
The amount.
The amount.
Yeah. So the question I have is, so the, the agenda item is, is the ordinance 1974 approving the redevelopment agreement, and then the attachment is the economic incentive agreement? Are those two different agreements, or is that the same thing?
It's the same thing.
Okay. So the changes that you were talking about were changes that were made to this agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
So they were made to, I believe, section 2.1 or 2.2 of the redevelopment agreement.
Okay.
The incentive agreement related to the timing of when things need to be completed.
Got it. And I, I think, yeah, and just about that, I think, we of all entities understand what that's been like to be trying to build something in this climate, that things have been changing quite drastically, almost daily, so I understand what that's like. Okay. Other questions? Actually, before we do that, I know the petitioner probably would like to speak. Would you?
I think there's, somebody got their hand up, too.
Yeah, if, if they can, I mean, I'm just here if you want to ask me directly some questions. I'm not a engineer, not a developer itself, right, so that's why I have some guys that are helping me out with this, but, you know, any direct questions to me, please? I mean, I can sit and cry to you about what's going on right now in the supply chains and the markets and the prices and stuff like that, but I'm pretty sure you shop every day and you see what's going on around, so.
Yeah.
But, you know.
They should be sent.
Sonya had mentioned that the refund amount may be increased. Right now, it's just the Rochester Drive improvements and soil removal. Do you know approximately how much more or what other items would be?
The amount that, that we have, I think it was 350 that was discussed, and we are asking for additional 80, what's that? The full amount, 433, 948 and 52 cents, basically.
And that's, that's one of the struggles that we're having with the, I guess, just trying to be responsible with the TIF dollars. So I know that some board members may have a little bit of heartburn over extending it above the amount that's in this agreement, but again, I defer to the board on kind of what your, what your pleasure is. Yeah.
And these just, and, and just as it was discussed previously, I think, these are just some extraordinary costs, right, that we have to do in order to develop this, this parcel. So we, we're kind of, we're not asking what's not ours, sort of say. We're just asking for some help to, you know, to help this project kind of move along, and, I don't think the variance that we are requesting is not as big, and I, I have some, I have a couple of sheets which I don't have enough copies, but I can leave it with you guys where it outlines those extraordinary costs. But if, if, if some more information needed of what exactly is above and beyond what we are requesting, I'm pretty sure we can, you know, send this information in. I just don't have it on me at this time.
Okay.
The increase that you're asking for is, is to help fund these improvements that we have already that we're talking about currently, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Just due to the situation we're in, the current situation. And then are you looking to keep the same term, sorry, I have my glasses on, this 75% and the, with the repayment rebate?
Reimbursement. Yeah, I think, I think this is something that we discussed and was agreed on, so I don't think we're trying to manipulate this. It's just those extra costs. And we received some bids. This is not that we just, you know, kind of grabbing numbers out of the thin air. But again, I don't have this in front of me, so I won't be able to, but, you know, on a later date, if you guys want to take a look at it, I'm pretty sure we can accommodate that.
And you know what, we have...
If we wait and look at this additional information, how does that impact your project?
Preferably the sooner the better, so then we can, you know, it's, it's, again, we have to, you know, finance the project, so it, it does impact it, but, you know, if, if we have your full kind of agreement and approval, that kind of helps things move along way smoother, so.
And, you know what, real quick, because I know two people have their, have their hands up on here. Is somebody able to unlock them so that Michael and Apple can talk? And I'm assuming they're both with the petitioner. If they're not, that's not going to work.
They are both with the petitioner. Direct Steel, I believe, is also with the petitioner.
Okay. All right. So all three of you, I think, are, are, have joined us now. Can you, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right. We can hear Direct Steel. Did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Just that Drew does have the cost breakdown, as does Sonya, and I think that all of you do have that. So, and just very much similar to what Sonya said, it has to do with the extraordinary costs of the cul-de-sac, which is unusual and unique to this project and the soil, excessive soil, and the architectural engineering fees that go along with that. Drew's position, obviously, costs have accelerated, and his pro forma right now is marginalized as a result of that. So this additional $84,000 he's seeking, along with, his bankers are saying, you know what, that's likely the difference, allowing this to move forward. And so that's why he's before you tonight. Drew, you agree with that?
Yeah, that is correct.
And can you state your name if you didn't?
Rosemary Swirk.
Okay.
S W I E R K with Direct Steel and Construction.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
And, Michael and Apple, did you have, you have your hands up. Did you have something? All right. Justin, I do have a question for you. Do you, I'm sure that you've looked at the increment that they'll generate here. Do you, do they anticipate that they will exceed, they will actually get to the 350 over the remainder of the TIF?
So the way that it was calculated originally was a lesser percentage, so it would go over the remaining amount of the TIF. When we increased the percentage to 75%, that decreased the number of years, roughly five to five and a half years, depending upon when the, when, when the property is assessed, and the increment starts to come in, so.
Got it. So they will?
They will, they will get.
Get there.
Yes, the 300, to the 350,000 should be, like I said, five to five and a half years.
We're talking about 430 now, not 350.
Attention.
So what are we talking about? Like, this is a 25% increase over what's in our packet. This isn't nominal.
Exactly.
Yep.
And as drafted here, that we have this, and the, the red line that you walked through, Sonya, that we don't have, did not talk about this, right? It's the 350, 75% until they're paid back.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Need to hear what the board thinks of this.
Not comfortable with switching on the fly. If we want to reconsider changing the amount, then I think we need to table it, come back, get a new presentation of this and look at it, as opposed to winging it on the fly in a motion to adjust it. So, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with the 350. I'm good with the incentive for the business. I'm not sure about the additional 84,000, because again, and I understand that there's extraordinary costs. We, we're building a $15 million building, and we have some extraordinary costs, and nobody's helping us. No one's helping us, no one's coming to help bail us out of that because we have some soil issues. We have some other things. It's just part of our project, so I'm not sure at the 11th hour I want to switch and increase the increment, because we put a lot of time and effort and research and conversations into what's presented to us now, so I'm not super comfortable with changing it unless we're going to table it and regroup.
But, but the problem with tabling it is construction costs are continuing to increase. You know, if it's, if it's 83,000 or whatever it is now, if it's tabled and they've got to get numbers and stuff, it could be 90, 95, 100. So the longer we wait, the more construction costs are going up. That's why we sold the bonds and things for the public works facility when we did. This area that's being developed here is difficult to develop. It's not a normal lot. It's on a cul-de-sac. They're difficult areas to develop, and the village is gaining the, some of the Rochester Drive improvements that we've wanted to have done. After this is, is, the, the TIF is no longer and the, the reimbursement is completed, then we're getting all of that. For now, would you rather have 20% of, 25% of something or 100% of nothing? Because eventually, it's going to be 100%. We've just got to get through the term that we're, we're providing them with the, the TIF funds. This is why we created this TIF, was so we could re, redevelop this area, and so now it's starting to happen.
Yeah, I haven't heard any objection to the, the project or the use of TIF funds. But the board packets came out Thursday. There's an $84,000 increase in the request. Why wasn't that made last week?
Well, that's why I...
Supply chain issues aren't new.
That's why I asked the question of Sonya when I did, is, are we approving the 350? And is it coming back, or can we, are we doing a motion? I'm fine with the 433, simply because I understand that eventually, we're going to begin getting all of the increment. So I'd rather have 25% of something at this point than 100% of nothing.
And that's why I was asking about that, about, you know, how this would impact your project, because this, we were set to vote on this tonight at the 350. I have had conversations with Director App, but I'm not prepared to start throwing out numbers and say, yeah, let's change what was presented to us, and, because frankly, I, I thought it was going to come, based on my conversation with her, I thought it was going to come looking very different than this. So I, I tend to agree with Doug at this point. I don't, I don't want us to start having this conversation here and going back and forth and trying to figure out what we're doing on the fly. If we could table it and come back in two weeks, and I know you have something coming up, I don't know if we could do a special meeting with our pal or something to come in and get it approved quicker than two weeks. But I, again, I, I, I just don't want to start and get into this precedent where, okay, yeah, we can change something on the fly.
Well, yeah. So just one comment that I'll make on that. The, this board has always been very good about considering things, kind of very nimble considering things. We make a couple of tweaks here and there. The problem that I have with this is negotiating the redev, the, the doling out of TIF dollars, you know, in the public after we've, and staff has vetted a dollar amount, and staff is comfortable with the dollar amount, and then bringing it to the board and asking for an increase. So if there's, if somebody wants to make a motion that we consider this in two weeks to table, you know, not motion, but if you guys want to table it and consider an increase, that's fine. I'd be very comfortable approving what's in front of us.
I agree. I mean, I'm, I'm all in on the, what's presented.
On the 350.
I'm good with that. It's the changing it at the 11th hour that I'm not comfortable with. And again, doing that on the fly here during, during a board meeting when we have staff that works behind the scenes to do this.
Well, and, and that's the details of everything that got submitted, and, and keep in mind, the TIF has, you know, in the TIF that we approved, had a, an enormous list of projects that we had to do that we will never fund, which is regional stormwater, you know, extend, not, not cul-de-sacs on the road, the literal extension of roads. Like, I'm not saying, not trying to minimize the investment that you want to make in our community at all. It's just, we have to be super responsible with the TIF dollars. So, that's my position.
And the other thing that I do want to point out too, is that I realize you have been incredibly flexible with the pushback that came from people who live in that area who frankly are not even in our corporate boundaries. I know that was one of the meetings that I ran, that we had people here that were complaining, and you guys have been really great and flexible about doing what we ask, so I, I do want to... and you guys have been really great and flexible about doing what we ask, so I, I do want to mention that and let you know that has not been lost on me as well.
This is Rosemary. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Sonya, would, it, it, I know that it might be perceived that this is last minute, but I think it was complicated by you had some time off and you had some COVID, and so it prevented things from moving. Can you share a little bit on that timeline?
So we've been kind of getting some updated costs from Rosemary's firm as they've been going through the bidding process kind of over the past month. Engineer Wallers and I and Director Van Vorn have been going over on the costs as they've been submitted, and they've been getting them, costs including, pardon me, the cost for the actual cul-de-sac improvements and kind of fine tuning what's going to be required for finishing out that, as well as for the soil removals. I think what we're looking at here, number wise, is basically they're looking to be made whole for soil removal. That's kind of the number that's standing out to me, the 433. That was the main number they had in there for soil, for excess soil removal on the site as part of their, their bids that they got in. Additional cost that they put before us was the fire loop having go in onto the property, and so that was another cost that was brought before us that, that we did review. After some discussion, they were looking into, they didn't quite understand that we are requiring that separate private fire loop now as we're looking at these, these types of developments to get those off of the, the public main. So they are looking into what those additional costs are related to putting in that RPZ and hot box and having this domestic line come in from the line that comes in with the, the fire hydrants around the building. So that was another questionable cost that they are still trying to seek. On our end, just from other projects that we've seen, we know the, the hot box and RPZ for that private fire loop seem to be coming in around $25,000 to $30,000 for that equipment. So we know that that is not necessarily a cost that they had anticipated when they entered into this project, because that's a newer policy that the village has started to move forward with. So from a staff level, that was something that we were willing to perhaps consider as part of tonight's. I do apologize with being out with COVID. I haven't been able to kind of get as much information to the board as possible on this particular matter, but, you know, as we're kind of look at those additional costs, the additional RPZ and heated enclosure hot box was something that staff considered could be potentially additional monies that we could help with, and we're looking at that being about $25,000 to $30,000. Again, you know, they are looking to try to be made whole with that 433,000. About $434,000, as, you know, we're kind of looking at this, you know, this is a shared expense. You know, we think that $350,000 that we proposed included covering the cul-de-sac and hole and putting a significant portion towards the excessive soil removal, which is something that the owner, current owner of the property just left there as part of building that detention area that is currently on the site for this development. So, you know, we knew that that was a hurdle that they had ahead of them that they needed to deal with and thought that was a reasonable cost as well. Again, additionally, potentially the RPZ and hot box, because that was not an anticipated expense. So, as I said, based on some other quotes that we've gotten, those tend to be about $25,000 to $30,000 more. And that might be the maximum comfort level staff has with going up from the $350,000.
And Sonya, are those all TIF eligible expenses?
Yes.
Okay.
The site work and the RPZ has to be put there at the end of the public main. So we believe those are all TIF eligible expenses. That would need to be added to the list. An exhibit D of the RDA would be the RPZ and heated enclosure as one of the eligible items in the RDA, if you wanted to increase it to allow for that additional expenditure.
Okay. I have a question on the excessive soils. This is for Engineer Wallers. With excessive soils that have to be removed, I'm assuming that those soils, there's no contamination or anything with those soils. As we develop other areas, can we use that soil for, for other, because I know we're creating detention basins and all sorts of things through there. Are there any areas that need additional soil?
Well, my understanding is that the material is just unsuitable for structural purposes and just needs to be removed from the site. We don't have a ready location that we could have that material delivered to. Even if we did, there's still a cost to handle it and truck it. So I, I think it's, unfortunately, it's a, you know, it's a cost that has to be incurred to, to make the site ready for a building.
All right, any other questions? Because it sounds like staff seems somewhat agreeable to modifying this. We're just not going to do that on the fly tonight. And, you know, things happen the way they happen.
Can I interrupt again? This is.
Yeah, that's fine.
This is Rosemary. So, so what Drew's facing, because of the amount of due diligence and the number of meetings, so Drew's entering into a purchase sale agreement, which has been extended several times. The last time it was barely extended. The sellers are getting what's commonly referred to as seller fatigue. And so the project almost died because the sellers were ready to give up. And if this gets tabled and fully, you know, that, that's your right, their, his extension ends this Friday. And so if that happens, he goes to him again, because this project will, the, the bankers, so, the bankers, as you likely know, to finance this, get this appraised. And how that appraisal comes in, based upon actual costs, impacts what Drew has to, additional equity he can put into that. Because the level of equipment and finishes that he has in FFME that he puts into this, that's additional capital. There's only so much capital available. The banks looking at this additional funding is a critical piece to that. So it's all tying together, so he would likely need to go back to the sellers for an additional extension, should this not be voted on, and that, again, impacts the viability of this project. So I just want to, it's not to push, it's not to pressure, it's just to make you fully aware there, there's extenuating circumstances here which will impact Drew's ability either to purchase the property or to move forward.
Okay, I got it.
That was going to be my question, and I, and I'm sorry, I can't remember if it was Steve or Doug had said, if we were to approve the 350 tonight, there's nothing that says they can't come back and ask for additional TIF money, correct?
True, or an amendment to that, but I wouldn't want them to think that, I wouldn't want to lead them on if you weren't interested in that. But yeah, I, I mean, anything could be amended, correct?
I just feel like, I mean, for me, I would need a little, I just want to think about it a little bit more, but I'm okay with the 350, and I don't want to cause an issue with the project.
And I don't mean to cut you off. At this point, I think it makes sense, and I would love to entertain a motion to approve this as is.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
My only hesitation is that it sounds like these conversations had taken place prior to this meeting, extenuating circumstances with Director App's absence, with those fire loops that have been going on, the additional soils. It's not as if the petitioner had just showed up tonight and asked for those numbers. It sounds like it's, there, there's some weight for the village to, to bear on this as well, on the presentation for, for tonight. And it sounds like if those items were in this packet as we had received it on Thursday, I don't know would anyone have hesitation to, to those items and those dollar amounts if they had saw it before tonight.
The full amount?
Considering, the, the 433, considering that, you know, there's a little bit of, you know, with the absence of, of employees here at the village to take into consideration as well. So again, it's not as if, as if the petitioner is here tonight going, oh, but I, I want this. These conversations have been happening for the last couple of weeks. That's, that's my concern of not moving forward with the timeline and getting this parcel purchased, the sale done, and, and what they're, what the petitioner is trying to do.
I can tell you, the 433, that's the first I'm hearing that particular number tonight.
But I had heard the 350 for a little while before that.
The 350, and then as.
Before the packet even came out, it was a number. And I guess, let's say it this way. Taking action on this tonight is the only thing that, because I'm not, we're not amending a redevelopment agreement on the fly. We're not negotiating that at a public meeting. That's the only way that we're going to act tonight that ensures that the project doesn't die on Friday. Again, as, as she stated, you know, boards don't really appreciate the, the contract ending kind of thing. It just usually doesn't sit very well that we have to make a decision with $400,000 today. But if the board's, if it's the board's pleasure to vote on this tonight, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on it? Okay, call the roll.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes, and I'm voting yes only because I can't vote on the bigger amount. I had conversations with Administrator Oful about this two weeks ago. I don't know why this wasn't conveyed to the other board members, because I specifically asked him to.
So strenuous, yes. All right, and that carries 6-0, thank you. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
So, so just for, for our planning sake, so Drew's going to talk with his bank, right? And if the bank says, no, you really need that additional amount in order to get this approved, he has to make a decision by Friday, right? So, so what, what potentially could be done with that delta in that timeframe?
Between now and Friday, when he talks to his bank? I would, I would work on that with Sonya, honestly, because the, the board voted on this now. We're not, I'm not sure what you're asking, what we can do. He can come back at a future meeting. If that $80,000 sinks the deal, then there's nothing that we can do about that right now. At, at this moment, at 7:47 on Monday night. And I don't want to send the message that we're against the project, but to do, to negotiate everything like this in the meeting is very stressful.
So I just wonder what Drew could have done differently so that the impression is that this was thrown at you at the last minute. I don't know what Drew could have done differently.
I don't think there's anything he could have done differently.
Sonya can call you tomorrow to talk about it.
I, I will talk to you guys tomorrow when I'm back in the office.
Thank you.
And we kind of go over things. And I do apologize that this did not go quite as smoothly as I would have hoped with me being out sick last week trying to get the packet out.
And that is not your fault, so, be well, we'll talk about it.
Yep. All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
All right, so item D this evening is a PSA with the EEI for 164,000 and change for the 2023 MFT and Infrastructure Road Program Design Engineering. Mark?
Thank you, President Prawley. So the board was brought up to speed at the July 11th meeting by Engineer Ott as far as the pavement management update. So included in this PSA would be the resurfacing for the fiscal year 2024, or 24, sorry. Would consist of the areas in which Engineer Ott identified in that update. Items included will be resurfacing, crack sealing, patching, asphalt rejuvenation, and other preventative maintenance throughout the village, as well as concrete removal and replacement of curbs and sidewalks. This is critical that we move forward and get the PSA approved tonight so that the engineering staff can get out this fall and evaluate the areas for next year's program, and then be able to get out for a letting in the February timeframe that the village typically does to obtain the best pricing from contractors. So with that, I will answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yep.
That carries 6-0, thank you. All right, the last item for separate action is a PSA with the EEI in the amount of 153,000 for the Lake Michigan Connection and Preliminary Engineering. Mark?
Thank you, President Prawley. So as you can imagine, the, the work that continues for the Village of Montgomery to move towards an alternate water source through the DuPage Water Commission from Lake Michigan in 2030. The items identified in this PSA are very critical for this. One of the most critical items would be the receiving stations, identifying the pumping stations or receiving stations that will be needed, not only for potential land acquisition, but also procuring materials and looking at that. As we look at this, there are multiple other communities in the Joliet region that are looking to go to a Lake Michigan option as well. So sourcing materials is going to be a difficult issue as there are a limited number of manufacturers that supply a lot of these materials for the pumping stations, as well as some of the water storage components. The other major component identified in the PSA will be funding sources such as WIFIA funding. There is a third-party consultant that will be working with the EEI to specifically look at WIFIA funding for the village as part of this PSA. So with that, I will answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
Thank you. Questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
That carries, thank you. All right, we don't have anything for discussion. Anything new or unfinished going around the horn here?
Real quick.
Go ahead.
I don't know if everybody's seen this in the news or not, but there's a concern about monarch butterflies right now. So I was thinking maybe something that the beautification committee could help on that, so I reached out to our arborist, Ed Pfaff, and he told me that in our naturalized basins, we already have milkweed and different types of milkweed, and that we could also introduce that into the arboretum gardens in front of the PD when we develop that project. So the village is already on top of that. Just want to let everybody know in case anybody asks you about that, that we have done our part to, to help with that issue.
Perfect. Yeah, they've been chasing me around when I run the trail, in a good way, so, all right, Teresa, anything?
Just to add on to that very quickly, Rotary has a pollinator program district wide, so I'm sure we'd be glad to partner in that.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
Cool. Trustee Bowman?
I planted no milkweed.
Don't let it happen again.
I'm sorry, I planted no milkweed.
Not today. Steve?
The requested increase for Transline was in the 7822 confidential weekly report. They asked if they, we would consider an increase. It shouldn't be a, it, it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. It's right there.
I had a conversation with Director App related to that, and it wasn't $84,000 either.
What was it?
It was like 25.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
Yeah.
We'll talk about it.
Doug, anything?
I don't know. Montgomery Fest is coming. Car show flyers are out and trying to get some car show participants. Crafters are signing up, so things are moving along. Staff has done a phenomenal job of pulling together to help cover everything with Christina having limited access. So staff has really pulled together to get everything together, and we're having a meeting tomorrow morning to kind of, so I can make sure I stay up to date. I'm not talking to Christine every day like I usually do, so.
I hear you.
That's it.
All right. Sounds good. Anything from staff? Don't usually do this, probably won't do it again. Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.